Very well done. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors for Monday, July 22nd. We begin today as we do all of our meetings with a flag salute, this time led by Supervisor Holmes. Please join us.
Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We do have a couple of items. Do we? Our consent is... No, we don't have consent. No, I didn't think so. I thought it was all kicked in the muck. So we'll go ahead and dispense with consent and move straight on to public comment. Any members of the public wish to address the board on any items not on our agenda today? This would be the time to do so. You'd also have an opportunity, if you chose to show back up tomorrow morning, we'll do a public comment then as well. But since you're here and you want to take advantage of the opportunity, this would be the time to do so. Please identify yourself for the benefit of our board and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody want to address the board on a public comment? All right. That's got to be a first for Tahoe. Moving on. Board member and county executive reports. Any members of our board have any updates that they'd like to share? No, I don't see any. No lights are lit. So we will continue to move on. Our 2:30 timed item, and this is the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Contract Extension and Budget Amendment. Now, it says also, "The presentation from the Ski Museum Foundation Board." I understand the Ski Museum Foundation Board would like that item to be taken tomorrow. So if my colleagues concur, we're just going to go ahead and table Item 1A2 until tomorrow, and we'll take it up... Let's see, I think we actually came up with a time for that one, did we not?
11:15.
11:15 was where we thought we could put it in there. That's right. So we did not notice it as a timed item, but for the benefit of the folks making the presentation, we will go ahead and table that item to 11:15 tomorrow morning. All right, well, let's go ahead and move forward with 1A1, please.
Thank you. Erin Casey here with the County Executive Office, here to present this item to you. I will focus on Part 1, as described here and in the staff report. I will talk about the proposed project summary at this point. I know your board has heard a fair amount about that, but provide a little bit of an overview. You'll hear more about the project tomorrow from the Museum Foundation. TOT grant history related to this project, the 2017 transient occupancy tax, or TOT grant award and contract details. Also, the action your board took on April 23rd of this year. The Museum Foundation requested changes to that action, and then the staff recommendation and potential action from your board. Just a little overview of the project itself. The proposed project, or potential project, is maybe a 16,000-square-foot facility, will include exhibit space and a visitor information desk, multipurpose room for events, theater, meeting hall, and event space. May also include a gift shop, bookstore, and snack bar, and the preferred site is Squaw Valley Park. Here's a little bit on the TOT funding history. The organization has been supported by your board through various allocations of transient occupancy tax all the way back to 2008. In fact, there have been four separate grant awards that your board has approved in support of the organization, really focused on business plan development early on, getting the organization's 501(c)(3) status in place, as well as fundraising and public outreach. The contract I'm focusing on today is the item at the bottom that is in bold, from October 2017, your board approved. A contract in the amount of $125,000 in transient occupancy tax dollars, and that was specifically to complete the architectural and engineering studies for the environmental questionnaire, as well as to complete public outreach. As I mentioned already, your board approved that in October of 2017. The total grant award was $125,000. The ski museum match associated with that was $168,000, and the contract term was October 23rd, 2017, excuse me, through June 30 of 2018. The budget, the project scope, and the contract term were all consistent with the original grant application that the organization submitted to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. At that time, the organization, Resort Association, managed a grant process on behalf of your board, and so that information was what we used to develop that contract at the time. Just a little bit on the grant status itself. The contract expired on June 30, 2018, consistent with the original contract term, but that was before work was completed associated with the contract itself. The Museum Foundation has informed staff that over $130,000 in expenses were incurred toward this project after that contract expired. However, we could not process payment for expenses incurred during that period because the contract had expired and the budget, it was the expenses, some of them were inconsistent with the budget that was originally approved by your board. In April 20... On April 23rd of 2019, your board directed staff to do a few things. One is to extend the contract term to December 31st, 2019. Also, to process payment for expenses incurred during that revised contract term, but consistent with the original budget, which meant that we would be able to process just over $13,000 in expenses incurred by the organization at that time. The contract balance would have been roughly $60,000, and staff recommended then that those funds be applied to completing the environmental questionnaire, as there are some additional tasks that need to be completed in order to get us to that point. The Museum Foundation requested changes to that action, and I'll go over those change... Those requests here. Museum Foundation had informed staff that the environmental questionnaire could not be completed until all outstanding invoices had been paid. The reason for that is a lot of the vendors who were doing work or would need... Would be needed to do the existing or remaining work for the EQ were the same ones that had outstanding invoices and required payment before they would move forward to do the remaining work. Also, what I've included in the board packet and what was requested is that the budget be revised to facilitate payment of the full contract balance, as opposed to a small portion of it. And that full contract balance is $73,674, and that would go to fund primarily administrative and legal fees that were part of the original budget, but were to be funded by the Museum Foundation at that time. So what we've done is we've reallocated TOT into that line item so that we can process payment for those expenses incurred after the contract expired. The Museum Foundation is also committed to funding the rest of the work that's needed to be completed to get the EQ done, and they'll do that with their own funding sources or non-TOT sources. Staff recommendation is to approve the contract extension and budget amendment as outlined in the staff report. After board approval, staff will process payment for the contract balance of $73,674 to the Museum Foundation for expenses consistent with that contract extension, as well as that budget amendment that's included in your packet. And then the Museum Foundation has committed to funding the remaining EQ work with its own funding sources. With that, I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions, if you have any.
All right. Board members have any questions at this time prior to opening up for the public?
Just a quick question.
Yes, Supervisor Gore?
Thank you, Erin. A quick question. You said the Ski Foundation would fund a match of $168,000, correct?
Yes.
So have those funds been expended, or are those the funds that will be expended in the future by the foundation?
The foundation has not met that match requirement, and in fact, by changing this budget, the match contribution toward the specific contract decreases. However, the match will still be roughly $60,000, which far exceeds match that most of our grantees provide as part of their projects.
So they'll still be spending those dollars, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
All right. My happy little board isn't lighting up with lights, of those of you, when you activate your microphone, so if you do want to just like...
Wave at me.
Yeah, wave at me or throw something at me, whatever. Supervisor Wygant, would you like to...
Erin, tomorrow, will we get a budget from the museum as to what the remaining path requires and includes to get the startup initiated? Or the doors open, I think, would be my...
Right. I've seen a... And actually, they could certainly speak to that tomorrow. In the presentation that I've seen, I have not seen an outline of the budget to complete the environmental questionnaire. However, I did receive a budget from their executive director several months ago, and also at the last board meeting in April, they estimated the cost to complete the environmental questionnaire would be roughly $30,000. So that's what I know. They're here today, and they could certainly speak to that if that information has changed or if it's been updated by some of their vendors.
All right. Seeing no other lights, and since they are working, we'll go ahead and invite representatives of the Museum Foundation to address the board on the item prior to us taking action.
Thank you, and thank you, Erin. I'm Jill Short Mill, Executive Director of the Sierra Nevada Olympic and Winter Sports Museum. I want to especially thank Todd Leopold, CEO, Karen Schwab, County Council, and Cindy Gustafson for working with Placer County staff to get this to where we are today. We really appreciate your time and efforts. The budget that you were speaking of, yes, we can... We can provide that in detail tomorrow. We have it in as part of the presentation, and we can speak to exactly what we are going to be focused on immediately following today's meeting and tomorrow's presentation in regards to completing the EQ process. There are three studies that remain, and we have engaged with all three of those consultants who will be working on those. They are carving out time, and they are ready to go to work on those three studies to complete the EQ. That will be our next focus. And tomorrow's presentation will provide a nice overview, an in-depth kind of look at where we've been, where we're headed, and we will be able to address any additional questions then as well. So thank you. Are there any other questions?
Board members have any questions? I don't see any.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any members of the public want to address the board prior to us taking action on this particular item? And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure?
First off, I... Is that on? I did. I did. I just need to get it closer. I wanted to thank Erin and staff for working, I think after our April direction, to make this work and come together, so I wanted to thank you for that. I also appreciate having been able to attend the CAP committees, where there was strong support for this project unanimously throughout the CAP committee, so it does have strong support in our community to get it to the next level, to decide and determine the future of it. So with that, I'd like to make the motion to make the amendments to the contract and the... Prove the contract extension and budget amendment in the amount of $73,674 to the expired contract between Placer County and Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation for work to complete the environmental questionnaire for the potential development of the Sierra Nevada Olympic and Winter Sports Museum on Placer County Squaw Valley Park site.
Okay.
Second?
We have motion, Gustafson, second, Holmes. Supervisor Holmes, did you want to add a comment?
No, I just want to make sure you heard me.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. You're close to the cork, though, so I'm sure she heard you. All right. Seeing no other comments from board members, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, none. Thank you very much. Well, seeing as how we have nothing but timed items and no department head items, we have a 15-minute gap to fill, so Supervisor Holmes is going to lead us in a line dance lesson. That's what you got the stats in there for, is that right? So we've got 15 minutes. We'll see you back here at 3 o'clock, take up the 3 o'clock timed item. You can put back on the music, just so long as it's not "Flock of Seagulls." I never did like that song. All right. because I was looking forward to that part of the event. All right. Moving on with a presentation on emergency preparedness and wildfire mitigation activities.
Yes. Oh, yeah, I think we need to... Good afternoon, Supervisor Holmes, members of the board. Becky Riggan from the County Executive Office, and I'm joined today by Holly Powers, our Assistant Director of Emergency Services, Captain Dennis Walsh of the Sheriff's Office, and Chief Schwartz, Tahoe District Fire Chief. So we are here today with the second board briefing on emergency planning and preparation and wildfire mitigation efforts. Today, we will focus on county-wide efforts, along with specific Tahoe area efforts that staff have been engaged in. And these will be provided by Polly and our first representative, our first responder representatives up here in Tahoe. So I'll turn the presentation over to Holly.
Thank you, Becky. Chair Euler, members of the board. Holly Powers, Assistant Director of Emergency Services here at Placer County. I first wanted to note that it's very important to recognize that there's a variety of mitigation and preparedness efforts occurring in the eastern portion of the county by all of the fire districts and departments at the local, state, and federal level. For the purposes of this presentation, we will be highlighting a few of the bigger projects that have been going on in this area. Firstly, we'll move on to cover some of the policy and planning activities. You'll notice this, there's a similar pattern here in the presentation that I'll be talking about, because these planning efforts are very intricate and involve a lot of our coordinated entities. So we are still actively engaged in our evacuation plan and mapping. Captain Walsh will speak to that a little bit in his portion of the presentation, and looking at coordinating the mapping and planning that's going on on the western side of the county with what's already happened here in the basin. The next item is the Extended Power Outage Plan. This is specifically tied to the California Public Utility Commission regulated public safety power shut-offs, which would affect PG&E on the West Slope and Liberty Utilities here in the basin. Your board will be receiving an update from Liberty Utilities following this presentation, more specifically on the planning activities that they've been doing within their utility program. Third, I also wanted to highlight the Everbridge Alerting Policy and Coordination, and again, Captain Walsh will speak to that a little more specifically, as that public alerting and messaging is the jurisdiction of the county sheriff. A few other really quick projects before I hand off down the line that I wanted to speak to briefly would be the Calfor... Excuse me. Governor Newsom requested CalFire produce a report in 45 days that highlighted the 35 top priority projects within the state. You have received presentations on this and actually visited the North Fork American Shaded Fuel Break during the July 10th CalFire tour. I just wanted to highlight that that is a large project going on in the shaded fuel break area, and it goes from the city of Auburn to the city of Colfax on that I-80 corridor. Just wanted to highlight that again. And also briefly mention the French Meadows Restoration Project. The county has a master stewardship agreement with the Tahoe National Forest for the French Meadows Forest Restoration Project, which provides authority to perform mechanical forest thinning operations, mastication of smaller trees, and removal of material biomass in a 22,000-acre region surrounding the French Meadows Reservoir. Your board will receive an item tomorrow, more specifically concerning that, if you had any further questions or wanted more clarification on that project. And with that, I would like to introduce NorTahoe Fire Protection District Fire Chief Mike Schwartz to review some of the fire-specific projects that are occurring in the area.
All right. Am I on? I am. Well, good afternoon, thanks to you all for being here, and I got to talk about a couple of my favorite topics. Let's let go there.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
He'll adjust it in the back. He'll take care of it.
So first, a little bit about who we are, sort of the Eastern JPA Chiefs. We're a group of fire chiefs and as part of Placer in the audience. Chief Celine's here, and Alan Riley, myself, and Sean Bailey, the chief of North Star, are the four chiefs that make up the Eastern JPA Chiefs. And we work in a pretty collaborative manner, and I'm going to cover some of the things we've been doing. While I think the campfire is kind of a wake-up call for the state of California, or the years before, 1718, you know, the Tubbs, Nuns, and Atlas, we kind of woke up in 2007 after our Angoro Fire, and more close to home is the Washoe Fire, which was in my district. Not as well-known, but pretty devastating to the community and taught us some lessons. So really, we've been actively doing this for over 10 years. Our programs include, you know, we have free defensible space evaluations, 4291s, between CalFire and the agencies I mentioned. We're probably doing more than 3,000 a year up here. And then we're, you know, a lot of these are done every couple of years now, and of course, with the insurance requirements, even more frequently. So very active defensible space programs. You know, I know Squaw Valley is nearly 100% compliant. North Star and North Tahoe and Truckee all produce huge numbers of inspections each year, and we use the Collector app, so it's actually very visual. If you look, we all share CalFire's Collector app, so you can actually look and see what properties have been evaluated and compliant. The other thing is that, you know, we really took an active role this year in the Wilder Than Wild film and doing panels. Between Truckee and the agency, we did four showings. I think we had over 500 participants from the community with panel discussions, always included Liberty. I saw Liberty walk in, and a big shout-out to them, because sometimes that was the hot seat. I was never envious of the representatives from Liberty on that one. Other things, we just do a lot of community meetings, HOAs, community meetings, and once again, somewhere between 500,000 people a year. So, and I can tell you, as you can imagine, what the big topics are, right? Evacuation, which Captain's going to talk about, and of course, fire assurance, non-renewals or cancellations, and those seem to be big topics. But everybody wants to know how we're going to be notified and how they're going to get out of here. And if you... It wasn't hard to see that today, right? Even if I drove in today to come to the meeting, you can see why people have angst. Just a couple of programs that we've had for a while. We have free curb-side chipping, have those programs in place for many years. We have green waste disposal programs in the area. And I think one of the things that we should be very proud of up here is every one of the jurisdictions has enhanced fire ordinances. We have strict fire regulations on open burning. That's campfires, warming fires, ceremonial fires. Those things the state don't regulate. And I took it on, I think, about five years ago, and I was... I got quite a bit of pushback initially, but the overriding concern of fire basically played out, and now all the jurisdictions have some very close to what was originally ours, and I will actually shout to Chief Celine. He took it to the next level, and I think by our next code cycle, we'll probably adopt his code, because I think he was a little more inclusive than we were. And I think those are the kind of things the insurance industry watches as well, is, hey, do we take on this stuff, these local issues, and have more restrictive codes? Last, I think firewise communities is worth mentioning. Now, North Star is one. Alpine Meadows has been one in the past. They're working on regaining it. Most recently for us, Carneian Woods in Carneian Bay became the first one within the basin. And why that's a big deal is, you're probably familiar with all the different types of activities, fire adaptive communities, neighbors for defensible space. We had Tahoe Regreen, if you really want to dig deep into your memory banks. The one that the insurance industry recognizes is firewise. And so I think something that, you know, we've really made a push on locally here is to really push for all of our little communities, our HOAs, to self-identify and to work at becoming firewise communities, because that is something the insurance companies recognize, and I think it has a direct effect on how we could become more insurable. Kind of stepping back regionally for a minute, I think it's worth mentioning that North Tahoe and some of the other agencies are involved in, with CalFire, in what's called the PTEIR. It's the West Shore PTEIR. It's a programmatic timber environmental impact report. It is a SEQA equivalent document that covers all the private state lands within the California part of Lake Tahoe. It goes all the way out to Squaw Valley into Dollar Hill. And if you can picture about a one-mile swath of land from the lake up, which will have a single SEQA document, then it would allow us to pick off those projects, whether they're mechanical manipulation or we're doing burns, as we can. And that was one of the things that came out of the campfire, is that the firewise folks there had a really difficult time and spent a lot of money trying to get SEQA done, and they never could get the work done. That's super frustrating, because of course, now all that land is burned, and it would have been better off to just had done the work. So we're trying to get ahead of that, and I think this is the move to the future. With that, we're also partnering with Lake Tahoe West, which is the federal part of that. So if you take the 10,000 acres that I described along the state and public, state lands and locally owned lands, there's a partnership program, which is 60,000 acres of federal land. So in essence is, if both these projects get done about the same time, I would tell you, the PTEIR, the one the local government's doing, North Tahoe Fires leading that with CalFire, will probably get done quicker, because look, we're local government. But the other side of that is that I think the federal program will be coming along. We'll be able to treat basically a shaded fuel break all the way around that part of the lakes. Obviously, more spacing closer to homes, more natural up higher, but in different gradients. And I think those are the kind of projects that are really going to make our communities much safer in the long run. Just the last couple of things of kind of interest, to kind of pique your interest, and if you ever want more interest, I'd be glad to get back. But we are involved regionally, Placer County as well, in a end warning system grant from FEMA. We're just waiting for funding on that. That was a grant originally written by the Tahoe Transportation District. They asked North Tahoe to step in and take the lead role on that, because we had a premitigation plan. With that said, that would provide 150 smart streetlights, not stoplights, streetlights, around the entire basin that would build a communication network using modern technology and of being able to communicate with the cars through like Waze apps, and also using sirens, like the old-fashioned airway sirens, to notify people. People want to know how they're going to be notified, how they're going to get out. If this gets funded, I think this is a really modern approach, and it's been used in other communities like Las Vegas, for example, with their traffic management center, and they use the Way Care app with that as well. Lastly, I think almost everything I've just covered is also related to fire insurance. I think everybody, and I know the board is, you wrote your letter, and I appreciate you digging into this issue, because we all have to work as a team together. But the things we're focusing on locally here, the local fire agencies are hiring more firefighters. We're staffing more fire stations. We are... We're bolstering our water systems. We're encouraging more fire hydrants and trying to get the water purveyors to help us put in more fire hydrants. That becomes a big issue when you get into that fireline product in that high range, when you're like 4 to 12, and you're that, maybe you can get insurance and maybe you can't. If you can get close to a fire station and have a fire hydrant, that makes you more insurable, along with all the forestry work that I mentioned. And last but not least, I think we just had aggressive forest management. We need to thinnest of our canopies and our fuels, so that, once again, those products that are used to evaluate people for wildland. So I'm going to end there and pass it to my partner, Captain Walsh, and if you have questions, I guess we'll field them at the end, if that's all right.
Chief's a tough one to follow. We have a fantastic working relationship up here, I must say that right up front. All our chiefs, local law enforcement, public safety, can't think of a better place to work. This, I'm Captain Dennis Walsh. I'm the station commander for the Sheriff's Office of North Lake Tahoe. I'm going to keep this at a pretty high level, rather than go down into the weeds with too much detail. Emergency management to continual refinement of threat assessment, updating procedures, planning, and coordinating with our partners. There are no moments of, okay, now we're ready. It's a continual process that changes as conditions change, as technologies change, as resources shift. We work both individually and together with our partners to prepare for what may occur next, whether that is a fire, an earthquake, floods, snow. We are an all-hazards region, and we try to plan accordingly. Some of the specifics that we are continuing to work on right now, we are refining our residential and commercial mapping systems and deployment methods. It's been a project that's been going on for a number of years. Each year, we try and take advantage of advances in electronics, electronic mapping systems to refine our ability to define specific residential and commercial areas in the event we need to be street-specific with warnings and evacuations. The updated mapping also includes shelters, temporary safe refuge locations, and critical infrastructure. So while such maps aren't new, we are continuing to refine our data sets to take advantage of the electronic systems, as well as traditional paper maps. Chief Schwartz mentioned the community outreach that his agency has been doing. We've participated both with some of the community meetings here, as well as our regional partners. Topics obviously have included prevention, evacuation, planning, and notification, and we'll come back to the notification part. We have also been participating in collaboration and training, both at the local and the regional level. These occur yearly, our meetings yearly, but we also do tabletop exercises and other courses that train our deputies and our first responders on what to do in the event of an emergency, whether it's area-specific or region-wide. So messaging and emergency notifications is always a hot-button topic for us, and in particular, in this area, it deserves some additional attention because of the tens of thousands of visitors that we get to the Lake Tahoe Basin and our region that otherwise don't necessarily have a connection to our community other than recreation and vacation. Emergency notification for this population is front and center of our regional meetings and internal planning. Obviously, we have emergency messaging systems in place already, which include Placer Alert or similar platforms, social media platforms, the emergency alert systems, which can be broadcast by our media partners, and WIA, the Wireless Emergency Alert System, which would activate cell towers. In the event of a sudden emergency that requires immediate evacuation to save lives, obviously In the event of a sudden emergency that requires immediate evacuation to save lives, obviously WIA is the obvious big red handle. However, with all of these different messaging platforms, we're still left with a messaging gap for those people who may not otherwise be connected to the community, or in the event of something that doesn't necessarily trigger a WIA alert. We struggled with that topic some time back, and late last year, broached the idea of kind of going back in time a little bit, perhaps to an AM radio system. And so that topic of conversation generated some research, and in the midst of that research, I found out that North Tahoe Fire, in fact, they're ahead of us on this, thank you, they have three AM radio broadcasting stations. We're currently working with our colleagues at the North Tahoe Fire District to develop procedures that would allow the Sheriff's Office to leverage that resource when an emergent situation arises. There's a few small logistical pieces to work out, but it's my understanding their system is operational, is currently being used for public service messages on AM 1630. Some of the logistical challenges that we may face is how do we inform the public of where to go, what station to tune into? So some ideas include portable lighted messaging signs, which the chief also has some of those. The county is also in possession of some of those. Outreach through businesses and hotels, outreach through the resort association, and in some way, not yet identified, opened ideas to get that information into our non-traditional vacation rentals. Kind of the idea is a point of entries and point of egress. We want the community coming into Tahoe to be able to see a sign that essentially says, "In an emergency, 1630 AM." So while the system is being used by North Tahoe Fire, it's pretty much mission-ready. We also recognize that there are gaps, both inside and outside the basin, that may not receive full coverage, may require augmenting our current capabilities. So enhancing this simple yet versatile tool may be a topic that returns to this board in the not-so-distant future for some additional consideration. Go for it.
Would you?
Yeah, go for it.
We're partners in this. I really feel bad that we left out something that's probably really important. We have a very active CERT team, our Citizens Emergency Response Team, and neither one of us were bright enough today to put it in our notes. And I'm sitting here listening to Dennis talk and thinking, I probably have some CERT members out there, and they're going to be like really cringing if I don't give them a shout out. It's really important, we have about 50 active CERT members up in this region, and we share the team. He is, one of his lieutenants, an active instructor. We have active instructors. And, you know, this is the basic premise of neighbor helping neighbor, but in the fact, if we have an emergency, we have to do an evacuation, you know, there's only a limited amount of firefighters, there's a limited amount of police deputies up here working, we're going to be counting heavily on our CERT team, and they'll be out there directing people. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and let you know that we had that resources. We shouldn't have overlooked in our notes, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware that that is one of the things that's up here that's going to be helping us in an emergency. There you go.
And with that, I conclude.
Thank you, gentlemen. Really quick, I wanted to direct the board and members in the audience to the alert and warning. One of the unique things in this area is the possible different alerting systems. And as Captain Walsh alluded to, we do work really closely with all of our public safety partners for that. The two big systems are Everbridge and Code Red. So for community members, if you download on your smartphone the Everbridge and Code Red alert, and then put in the parameters of where you live and what you want to be alerted for, it'll automatically buzz to your phone regardless of your opt-in or not. And I've displayed on the PowerPoint which jurisdiction has each one of those types of alerting, and the website you would go to in order to sign in and opt-in to that. So just wanted to touch base on that. The app is beneficial. Some other preparedness information, the Office of Emergency Services website is, has completed its Phase 1 update as mentioned at the last board meeting, and now is outlined. If you go to placer.ca.gov/EmergencyServices, you'll be able to kind of walk through that personal preparedness, the four basic steps of build a kit, make a plan, be informed, and get involved. The be informed is hazard-specific, so you can click on any of the hazards that we've identified in the county and get a little more, more information on that, print out some checklist. All of these are FEMA-based checklists at this point, and that's the Phase 1. Our Phase 2 and Phase 3 will incorporate much more of the Placer-specific information and working with our local partners in order to leverage their websites and the information they already have published to make sure that we're getting the best information out to the residents of Placer County. The next website I'd like to highlight is the CAL FIRE Ready, Set, Go, ReadyForWildfire.org, which is really good at that personal defensible space. And I'd also encourage residents to look at their local fire district websites for any further information specific to those districts. Everyone up here has a social media presence, and if you're so inclined, I think I included the majority of the handles. I am not the PIO, so I think that's the right word. And then with that, let's see, what do I also, we also have quite a few public outreach campaigns that are occurring in the area at this time. And with that, I'm going to hand it back over to Becky.
Okay, we briefed your board on this slide back in June, but just for the folks up here in Tahoe, we wanted them to be aware of that. In addition to all these operational and project-based efforts, the county is also strengthening its communication and outreach efforts. This slide highlights three key strategies. So across the bottom, staff are expanding our outreach effort with residents and private landowners through our Fire Safe Alliance and councils. We recently added a new council in North Auburn to focus on the issues in that part of the county. And then in the green there, we have the Placer County Forest Health Task Force. That's comprised of federal, state, and local agencies. In 2018, the governor issued an executive order that transitioned this state tree mortality task force to the Forest Health Management Task Force and broadened their scope with the goal of establishing healthy and resilient forests that can withstand and adapt to wildfire. And the Placer County Tree Mortality Task Force is in the process of transitioning in a similar manner. This new task force will be meeting monthly and will include those local, state, and federal stakeholders to coordinate the prioritization of regional projects. And then finally, across the top in blue, staff will be initiating a Forest Health and Wildfire Mitigation Forum. That will be comprised of elected officials and senior stakeholders across the county to share information on all these efforts. Then, as your board is aware, we have been hearing more and more of our residents who are experiencing issues with non-renewals or sharp increases in their fire insurance coverage. And although the county does not have agency responsibility for insurance, we are engaging on multiple advocacy fronts with California State Association and others, and indirectly with the Insurance Commissioner to explore solutions. Supervisor Gustafson also recently initiated a survey across the county of our residents to better understand some of the challenges that they're experiencing, and we've had a great response on that so far. So that concludes our presentation today. We're available for any questions you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Board members, have any questions? Supervisor Gustafson?
Yes, thanks, Chief Schwartz and Captain Walsh. I had two questions for you. One is, Mike, on your surveys that you've done, what kind of response have you seen from your surveys that you've done on fire insurance?
Aaron, do we have anything, I'm sorry, can you hear me? Aaron, do we have anything newer than what you provided most recently?
I haven't pulled the data today.
So I think, just to sort of summarize it in general terms, we had a couple hundred response. There's, I would say, if you looked at it globally, there's a few insurance, the primary insurance companies are pretty much pulling out of this market. I think the most recent one and the most dramatic one is AAA. 18% of all the non-renewals in the survey came from 3A. Then there's a pretty decent spattering of the rest. The, I think what we're seeing in our, at least in our area, is that most of the folks in this area's already been through the, what I call the premium line insurers, and they're usually, Lloyds of London's underwriting most of the policies in the region up here. And I think now we're running into Lloyds of London's feeling saturation. They seem to be backing out of the market a little bit, which leaves most people with a fare plan and a DIC, a difference in conditions policy. Does that sort of answer your question?
Yep, yep. And I, and I'll share with you some information we have. And then Captain Walsh, on the notice to visitors, I know we're talking tomorrow about short-term rentals and posting and requirements to post information in the homes. And so that's a valuable thing we can discuss as far as making sure if there is an AM station, that that's posted in the house and that they're renting or the condo they're renting, making sure we get the word out that way too. So. And then as far as our, just for our survey results, and I'm happy to have staff do this, but they sent it to me while I was sitting here, so I wrote it down. Wendy, do you want to summarize it? And I do appreciate staff jumping on this because constituents are responding, so it's pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, we put the survey out as of Thursday through Twitter and Facebook and through our newsletter, and so far we've seen 1,445 respondents. Early indications show that 50% have received a cancellation or a non-renewal notice. And we've also seen that 15% report an increase in their premiums, and 35% have not been canceled. We did a look a little further and saw that of those who received the non-renewal notice or cancellation, 18% saw their premiums double, and 40% saw their premiums increase between 25 and 50%. And 90% of all those who received a cancellation notice did not have a physical inspection of their property. We intend to push the survey out through next door, next week, or this week, excuse me, and that will be approximately 107,000 households that will receive this countywide.
Again, I just wanted to thank staff because I think that will help us in talking to our electeds and passing that on to the Insurance Commissioner, that this is a profound impact in our communities that are in the foothills and the Sierra. So, thank you.
Supervisor Holmes?
I just wanted to thank Chief Schwartz and Captain Walsh for your presentation and your efforts on this. I really have to shout out to both Holly and Becky for really taking, taking charge of this for us, and you've really done a great job moving this forward. I see our Placer County Fire Chief and CAL FIRE Chief has us out there. Thank you for your participation in this. It's been, we've really come a long way in the last year and a half, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
All right, seeing no other board members have questions or comments at this time, any members of the public want to address this item? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Euler, members of the board, CEO Todd Leopold. My name's Alex Morolatos, and I am the owner and general manager of the Morolatos Lakeshore Resort in Tahoe Vista. I am up here to both concur on the importance of this topic and applaud your focus. To remind the board, our property suffered a catastrophic fire in 1993 on the 5th of July. It took out the whole right, right wing of our resort. We had all six fire districts at the time at our property. One fire hose on the building that was built in 1960 of pure wood and no fire suppression. But the rest of the engines and the water were spent on the trees across Highway 28 to prevent it from jumping, so I applaud our fire department back in 1993 for doing a great job. My only, I have three suggestions. I think the focus should be on greater community outreach. We heard, we've heard a lot of great things today. I personally have already signed up on the emergency notification system. However, a couple thoughts to ponder. Our utility districts have emergency response tools and procedures in place today that I think should be at least well-understood and fully integrated at best into an emergency protocol system. I believe our businesses in particular, our lodging community that collects the TOT from all the visitors who would receive most of the inquiries at the point of an emergency, you need to guarantee that we are fully and well-briefed, first, and educated. It's not enough to have it out there. You must find a way to educate your lodging community, and that's property management companies as well as lodges. I think last, or at least on that point, leverage the business associations and the North Tahoe Chamber of Commerce to provide both information but also have a clear understanding of their role in the case of an emergency. Because again, they will be the primary receiver of, how the hell do we get out of here? What's going on? Basic stuff. I fully applaud the fire and safety protocol. I pay strict attention. I still have a fundamental question that I can't answer to my guests. How would we get out of here if there were a major fire, like the one I just described, right in the middle of Tahoe Vista that scares everybody in Incline Village in Nevada and everybody else here, to get out of one artery, 267, and then 431? I don't know. I truly doubt that most of us know the answer to that. And I wonder how much true risk there is when that happens, because it will happen. It's, we have to plan as if it's going to happen, right? To be safe. Lastly, do not stop at households. Businesses have seen sustained significant premium increases over the last four years, double-digit. And we are now being notified that our current nationwide carriers, that's not our carrier, nationwide, is refusing potentially to cover some of the operations. So that might be another area to look in. Thank you so much, and, well, by the way, thank you for being here in North Lake Tahoe. We really appreciate you guys.
Thank you. All right, anybody else want to address the board on this item? It doesn't appear so. Okay. Well, no action required from, on our part. Sir, you weren't, were you stepping up to address the board on this item, sir? No? Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to our 3:15 timed item. This is another presentation, this one from Liberty Utilities on the wildfire mitigation program.
Good morning again, Chair Euler, members of the board, Holly Powers.
Afternoon.
Afternoon. I said good morning. I've been saying good morning all afternoon. Good afternoon. Holly Powers, Assistant Director of Emergency Services here at Placer County. I have the pleasure of introducing the next item as it be a presentation from Liberty Utilities about their wildfire mitigation program covering the topics of real-time weather monitoring and intelligence, vegetation management, system hardening, and their public safety power shut-off program. I'd like to introduce Travis Johnson, the Vice President of Operations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you to the board for having us here. Again, my name's Travis Johnson, VP of Operations for Liberty Utilities. So I just wanted to briefly give the board an update on our wildfire mitigation plan. There are three components to the plan to keep at high level. Our vegetation management program, the expansion of that program, system hardening, doing things like non-expulsive fuses, covered conductor, rebuilding infrastructure that's old and at risk of causing fire, that type of thing. And then the third item is the public safety power shut-offs that we've all been talking so much about as of late. So, public safety power shut-off, you know, what is it? This is when we actually proactively de-energize the system to prevent the possibility of wildfire. I think everyone here knows what we're talking about. We actually have done a small version of this last year. It only impacted about 50 customers, but it took out about 20 miles of line exposure the way we did it. So we thought that that was, that was a pretty smart thing to do. It was that storm just before Thanksgiving when there was no precipitation in the, in the mountains, and it was very dry, high winds were inbound. So we've, we've kind of broken the seal on a, sort of a dry run, so to speak. So areas of highest risk, you know, we do have a Tier 3 zone in the south portion of the Tahoe Basin, but essentially, you know, really all of our service territory here along in the Tahoe Basin and in the county is, is high risk. So we want our customers, you know, all customers should be prepared for the possibility of a public safety power shut-off. We have installed 10 weather stations in, in, what's the word I'm looking for, in concert with the weather service. So we looked at where weather stations currently are and where we had kind of voids. So they helped us select the sites where we should put these to help them and us better understand what's going on out there. And you can actually see these weather stations on the website listed there on the screen, So these are helping us with our advanced notification and determination of PSPS events. So when is PSPS required? So the things we're looking at, we're working with Reacts Engineering, their fire science folks, to establish thresholds in which we would actually enact a PSPS. So we're looking at wind speed, humidity, temperature. And then ERC, the energy release component, and it has to do with the fuel load and dryness and things that, that these guys know way more about than, than we do, or than I do, but they are looking at the fuels in the forest and how, how much moisture remains in those, and we're actively surveying that. And then the last piece is the fire weather index. So it's kind of an AND function with these five variables, and again, Reacts is, is working with NV Energy on the east side of the basin, us, and they're working with several other utilities in, in California. So these guys, they really know what they're doing. So how often, I think this will be probably one of the most valuable pieces of information for the board, how often will, will... for the board, how often will, are we expecting that these will occur, a public safety power shut-off? And this is preliminary, so I want to caveat it with that, but the data that they pulled for NV Energy is indicating something like maybe once every five to 10 years. So, this was a little bit of a relief for us when they told us this last Friday. They have a report that's due to us here at the end of the week that will validate this finding. So, we're hopeful that it wouldn't be as often as we were initially concerned, but those variables I showed you on the last slide, essentially, they're saying they will line up based on historical averages, something like every five to 10 years where they would recommend, recommend a public safety power shut-off. Come on, clicker. There we go. So, if we are going to do a PSPS event and the thresholds are exceeded, we're going to continue to monitor, actively monitor the conditions using our real-time weather data stations, et cetera. We're going to start communicating first with our local governments, OES, et cetera. And in discussions with, in the collaborations we've had with Holly and the fire professionals in the room, the messaging we're getting is, let's over-communicate. Don't worry about crying wolf. If you see something coming, the OES would rather know about it than be caught off-guard. So, we're hopeful up to eight days in advance, we can notify our community, our local government agency partners, and then continue to monitor as we get closer to the event. Then, initial communication with customers, up to 48 hours' notice, so once we get closer and we have better data, that's when we intend to start messaging around 48 hours in advance. And we'll also be reaching out to our medical baseline customers, folks like with oxygen concentrators, et cetera. Oh, boy. Okay. So, once we do confirm that we are going to have a public safety power shut-off, we will be communicating again with local governments, agency partners, et cetera, up to 48 hours in advance. And 24 hours in advance is the second step, and then shortly before the actual shut-off with our customers and media partners, 48 hours, and then again, 24 hours before the shut-off. And then, just as we are beginning, again, more communication with our medical baseline customers than we would initiate the PSPS. We'd continue to communicate while the power's out and throughout the event. And then lastly, so the event has passed, conditions have stabilized, we'll begin to restore our circuits, inspecting for damage, make repairs, and then re-energize once we know it's safe to bring the circuits back on. And it could vary, this is the part that makes my head hurt, inspecting as many miles of line that we do have can take quite a while, so we are working on ways to do that in a much more timely manner. And then, obviously, when we do restore the power, we will be communicating that the PSPS event has concluded. So, one of the most important things that we're sharing with our customers is that they need to update their contact information with us. So, we're really pushing customers to give us a call and make sure that we have email, phone numbers, et cetera, because we will be pushing out updates on Everbridge. And we also, with Kurt's support back here, all of our social media platforms, website, I mean, as many outlets as we can get, local radio, regional TV and radio, et cetera, et cetera. So, really doing our best to get the messaging out there. And with that, I wanted to open it up for questions.
Any of my colleagues have any questions on this item?
Of course, of course. First off, I'm surprised at the limited amount projection of when these might occur. That seems very minimal, given changes in our climate and things that are going on that we're seeing in our storm fronts. So, can you, how are you projecting forward from these changing conditions?
So, as I understand it, the Reacts folks, so, for example, the Angora Fire, I think all of those variables I showed you on that slide, they lined up for that event. So, you know, we are constantly learning. The number they actually gave us was closer to 10 years, but I'd rather be conservative here and say five to 10. So, even if they're off by a factor of two, I think that still covers that maybe once every five years we might be seeing an event. So, we'll knock on wood and hope that that, that's the way the data come back.
The other question I had is, fortunately, sitting on this board, we also have PG&E on the other side, and we had a presentation from PG&E talking about the resilience zones that they're looking at installing, where they actually harden a downtown community, make sure that some of those services can be isolated and power can continue in those areas. Have you looked at that as well?
So, great question. So, the strategy that we're trying to employ is to maximize our reduction in exposure while minimizing disruption. So, it's a different way of saying, doing the same thing. What we're hopeful is if we do a PSPS, we can kind of do it with a scalpel instead of a kind of a cleaver. So, there's three levels that we're working on right now. The one is do nothing. Two is a surgical kind of PSPS, and then the third one will be kind of a DEFCON 5. We just got to shut everything down. We're still working through that, but it's my preference to do more of the surgical, you know, let's try to keep the businesses operating, keep the streetlights, pumping load, critical infrastructure energized, but take out as much exposure as we can in other areas, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think they were going another step, and they have a larger service area, obviously, in this impacted area, but where they're actually hardening some of the infrastructure, undergrounding utilities and creating some areas, especially, the presentation was up in Forest Hill the other night, and we were talking about that community in particular in the downtown and the high school area, being an area where they could try to keep service for those with medical devices, fuel pumping for people to evacuate if they're out of, you know, fuel, that they can gas up and get out of town and those sorts of things, so.
Right. It's a great question, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we do have some literature that we are trying to get out to our customers on the topic. But, yes, in the wildfire mitigation plan, little brochure here, we talk about doing things like covered conductor to do some of that hardening, replacing fuses so that they don't expel hot particles, that kind of stuff. But, yes, that's the thesis that we're trying to go after as well.
Thank you.
All right. Any other members of the board have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, any members of the public questions or comments on this item? Okay. Thank you for the report, Holly. Did you have anything else to add? All right. Thank you very much for the update.
Thanks for the opportunity.
We will now move to our 3:30 timed item. This is a item regarding a request for a voluntary property tax exchange agreement with the Truckee Fire Protection District. Mr. Leopold, do you want to introduce this item?
Yes, actually, I will. I think we're good?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to actually talk through this one, and I believe we have some individuals in the audience that'll be, that have had this request, they'll be wanting to speak with you as well. So, the action before you this morning, or this afternoon, listen to the Holly here, this afternoon is a brief request based on a letter dated April 15, 19, from Hefner Stark, Mark Coys, and Law Firm on behalf of the Truckee Fire Protection District. The request is to share 40% of that fire control fund revenues from those, from 12 different TRAs within the Truckee Fire Protection District service area in Placer County, and then ultimately see board direction to return a subsequent date with an updated fiscal analysis of the request for your review and consideration. Let me talk through a couple of items just so we can lay the foundation moving forward. As most of you are aware as a board, at the time voters approved Proposition 13 in the 1970s. The Truckee Fire Protection District levied the property taxes based on net assessed values, the tax rate areas within those district boundaries. At the time, the Truckee Fire Protection District set up a special minimum fire protection zone for remaining tax rate areas and what eventually became what we know as Marthis Camp area. There it was undeveloped, thank you, was undeveloped when it was annexed into the district's fire service boundaries in approximately the year 1974. In this special zone, the district established the levy be based on the value of, be based on, be based on the value of structures but not land, and received no revenue because no development had taken place in the special zone at that time. The decision was to set up a special zone was based on the agreement between the district and the owner of Marthis Camp at the time. Assembly Bill 8, or as we call AB 8, state legislation enacted to implement Proposition 13, established those rules for apportioning property tax revenue to agencies and districts based on its formulas for revenue received during the three fiscal years before passage of the proposition. Under that formula, Truckee Fire received no post-Proposition 13 property tax revenue for the special zone rate areas noted, because it had no revenue based on there in the years before the passage of the proposition, because as stated, no development occurred at the time. Today, Marthis Camp, Shaffer's Mill, and Luhaton developments are located in these TRAs. Placer County has engaged in several discussions with Truckee Fire Protection District on this topic over the years. Most recently, a letter was dated December 2018, and where staff notified the district of its conclusions. And this correspondence is included in the Attachment 2 of your packet. The Truckee Fire Protection District is requesting in its letter to share 40% of that fire control property tax revenues received in the TRAs associated with the special zone. The county has adopted guidelines to implement revenue and taxation code distribution when it involves jurisdictional changes with special districts such as this property. The copy of that Resolution 80-14, or 142 was included in your report packages as well as Attachment 3. While this request is not a request to change jurisdictional boundaries nor to provide extra services, at these times, these guidelines are analogous to the situation before you did a for your consideration. Staff has included in your board packet preliminary fiscal information is requesting to return to your board if you so choose with the detailed fiscal analysis at a subsequent date. The board, if you so choose to move forward with a voluntary revenue exchange agreement as stipulated here in this request, this action would require a notice, public hearing to be considered at a future hearing date. So, that lays down the, kind of the basic foundational outline of both the request and the issue before you to date. I'm happy to answer any questions, but you may want to hear from the, those that have submitted this letter for your consideration.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions of our CEO before I ask Mr. Taren to step forward? Not seeing any. Mr. Taren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good afternoon. And can you all see the screen?
Yeah, and we have, we have one right down in front of us on the other side, right there. We have one right.
Okay, good, good. Okay, yes, Tim Taren here today representing the Truckee Fire Protection District in this request, and the request is shown on the first slide here today. With me from the district is Vice Chair Gerald Herrick. Chair Hernandez is out of the country right now. Also, board members Paul Wilford and Aaron Prado, and of course, Chief Bill Saleen. And if I can't answer questions, I'm sure they can. Going to start today by just, actually, some of the presentation I planned for you today, I'm not going to duplicate because Todd did a really good job going through kind of the history here. So, let's go to the next slide. So, the next slide shows the district boundaries in red, but the area that we're concerned with really is the area within the circle there. And I can, I can use a pointer if you need it. And that's the Marthis Valley. And as Todd pointed out, that today is Marthis Camp, Luhaton, Shaffer's Mill. And these blue shaded areas here are the tax rate areas which have zero property tax today and zero fire control tax as well allocated to the district. The reason I call it the donut hole, which is Luhaton Phase 1 in the middle there, remember Todd mentioned how the 1974 agreement was entered into between the property owner and the district at the time this was annexed? That particular parcel actually had development on it, and so it got taxed, thankfully. It got taxed. But all the blue area was the subject of that odd assessment that in 1974, no one could have predicted what would happen with AB 8. And of course, when AB 8 was passed, was passed, no one could go backwards because it took the last three years of property taxes, so it was too late to do anything about it then either. And the result was what we have today, which is zero property tax allocated to the district for these blue TRAs. So, I just wanted to maybe add a little history here, which is, so that was 1978, and what happened for the next 20 or 30 years? Well, for the next 20 years, not much happened, as you know. It wasn't until the late 90s that development plans started servicing for the Marthis Valley. And in late 1996, the district actually wrote a letter to the county asking for clarification because it was a confusing situation as to what would happen with the district's taxes in these areas. And if you'll indulge me, it's not a long letter. I highlighted the yellow area, but I'm going to read the whole thing because it's that important. So, in 1997, the county writes the district and says, "Dear Mr. Osburn, I am writing this letter as a follow-up summary to our meeting and conversations regarding Truckee Fire Special Zone Annexation 7," which, by the way, is all those blue tax rate areas. "The question I have been researching is why the tax rate areas in Annexation Number 7 have not been included in the AB 8 calculation. After researching back to 1975, 1976, I found that the revenue for that area has been included all along. A summary schedule with backup copies is attached. The assessed value for that area, however, has not been included. During our meeting, you indicated that the assessed value of the Annexation Area 7 has been minimal, but that due to upcoming growth in the area, this value could become substantial. We have now added all of the Annexation Number 7 tax rate area in your main, in your main district in AB 8. As agreed upon for 1997, 98 on, the assessed valuation and future growth for the Annexation Number 7 area will be included in your AB 8 calculation." So, in 1997, the county wrote the district, and the only sensible way of reading that, I believe, is that you're going to get the benefit of the increased AB in your property tax share allocation, and don't worry about it. Now, 1997 to 2003, development plans went forward, EIRs were done, and in 2003, we have the Marthis Valley Community Plan Final EIR. And then, as you do with all new developing areas, and by the way, this will come up today, and I'm happy to address it now, and I will be addressing it later as well, why is this different than other areas in your county, other districts in your county that are short funding? And why shouldn't they be entitled, if the Truckee District is entitled, why shouldn't they be entitled to get more revenue? Well, this was unlike the legacy areas in the county, which really have not seen, they've seen some development and growth, but nothing like this. This was a new community plan, brand-new. And when you do new community plans or specific plans, we all know, and this amongst us, Placer Vineyards, Bickford Ranch, Regional University, et cetera, you do a fiscal impact study. And when you do the fiscal impact study, you look at service demands and you look at revenue. And if there's a shortfall in revenue relative to the service demands, you require the developer or project to augment that funding with a CFD or CSA or some other kind of funding augmentation. Well, in the Marthis Valley Community Plan 2003, the conclusion was, the existing funding mechanisms are sufficient to pay for increased impacts on services. Now, in other words, no CFD, no CSA. The reason for that was, if the district got its historical property tax share, as was represented in 1997, there would have been plenty of money to fund all the fire services and probably with some money left over. And so, that was correct, if you assumed what was assumed in 1997. And by the way, there have been several people who said, hey, you know, the district, the Truckee District could have fixed this if they would have just required a CFD then or a CSA then. Well, given how much property tax was generated and fire control tax was generated out of these projects, there was such a surplus in the fiscal impact study, over $20 million, by the way, you would not have been in any position to ask the developer for, to augment funding. We would have been doing exactly what we're doing today. We would have been talking- We would have been talking about, okay, what kind of share do we need to have? So, I think that's what makes this so different than any other district in the county. Okay, just a couple of examples. Tahoe Donner, which is in Nevada County, but, you know, comparable, a little bigger, but the AV today is 2.8 billion, the Ad Valorem share is 28 million, Truckee Fire Protection District gets about nine percent there, two and a half million dollars. Serene Lakes, smaller, but in Placer County, assessed value today is 359 million, Ad Valorem is 3.6 million, Truckee Fire gets 352,000. Now, these seventeen tax rate areas in the Martis Valley, today, and this is, by the way, this is 2017 numbers, this is probably several, maybe a hundred million higher today. The assessed value, 2.2 billion, Ad Valorem, 22 million, County General Fund, 9.2 million. If our average, the district's average share throughout their district is eleven percent, would have been receiving two and a half million, they actually get zero. And by the way, every penny of that two and a half million goes back, goes to the County General Fund. It's not restricted. It goes, you picked up all of that. Now, so what are we requesting? As Todd pointed out, there is the fire control tax. We're not asking for any allocation of general fund revenue. But you all know, and we know, that you have your fire control tax, which is 1.88 percent of the one percent here. And in 2018, pre-E-RAF numbers, using the staff reports' numbers, 474,385 dollars is generated today out of these no-pay tax areas, tax rate areas. We're requesting forty percent of that, very modest, 189,754 dollars in today's 2018 dollars. So, I'm going to go back now. Why is this unique? TPFD receives no share of the one percent Ad Valorem tax generated in these TRAs. By the way, the fire control tax today basically funds Placer Fire. And the other districts in the county typically get mutual aid from Placer Fire. And so there's some justification why that fire control tax should flow to the county to fund Placer County, so that they can fund their mutual aid obligations. This district gets no mutual aid from Placer Fire, none. All the mutual aid comes from surrounding districts. There is a Cal Fire truck in the Truckee Fire Department Station by the airport, but that fire truck is funded by the state directly as part of the wildfire management programs. So it's not funded out of Placer Fire, County Fire funding. Now, so none of the fire control tax revenue generated in Zone Seven is used to serve this area? And remember when I mentioned Placer Vineyards and Bickford Ranch and Regional University? When you did the fiscal studies for those, 100% of the fire control tax was dedicated to those areas to offset their service needs. 100% in the fiscal impact study. The developer project only had to make up the difference. We get zero of that. The one percent Ad Valorem tax revenue generated in Zone Seven far exceeds the cost of service, as you saw those numbers, many millions of dollars. The fire control tax revenue generated in Zone Seven is unusually high, given the property tax values. And by the way, the typical fire control tax in the county is about ninety bucks a house per year. In this area, because of the high AV, it's $500 per house. So even if you take forty percent of it, you're still left with $300 a house, which is triple what you get from houses elsewhere in the county. I've also already mentioned how new development projects are funded in, easy as Placer Vineyards, et cetera. I didn't mention in new annexation areas, and this is not one of those, but Todd pointed out the policies that you have with regard to those annexation areas. In those annexation areas, when, for example, Lincoln annexed a little portion of the county in the last five years, when you did the tax sharing agreement, you allocate the fire control tax between the city and the county. You share that fire control tax, based upon respective, whatever your tax agreement share is. Say it's 5248, well, it's split 5248. And then finally, I'm just going to end here by going back and saying, I'm not, we're not pointing fingers at anybody here, in terms of what, it was no one's fault that we got where we are today. What it was, though, is probably a series of mistakes on a lot of people's parts. The 97 letter from the Auditor Controller, the Martis Valley Community Plan and Fiscal Impact Study. But I will just emphasize, you can forget those, because had it been brought up then, as I said before, and had we known about it, we would have been having the same discussion we're having today. And so, it's better late than never, and it's now, now it's time to decide. So we hope you'll agree with us and grant our request. Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Board members, have any questions at this time? I have a question, Chairman. The letter from Kim Buck in 97. If that letter had been written today, what is the process by which those funds would have been realized by the district? I'm assuming that's a treasurer-tax collector issue. Is that correct, or is that, is that not correct, in terms of? In other words, what I'm trying to figure out is, where did we miss? If Kim Buck says, "Yeah, you guys should be getting the benefit of this," then what happened from there?
Yeah, there's no way to, we've actually looked at that, because in 2012, that's the reason the county wrote the letter to us, that's in your staff report. I mean, there is no way to fix it short of what we're asking for today.
No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand internally within the county, what happened?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar enough with how the county finance department works and responsibilities to answer that question, so maybe your staff can.
All right. Okay.
There are, by the way, there are a lot of other people here today in support of our proposal. There are some board members, I mean, it's up to you who you want to hear from, but in some way or another, even if you don't hear from them, perhaps it's appropriate to acknowledge when they're there.
Well, I'm about to open it up to the public, seeing that none of my colleagues have any questions.
Thank you very much.
You betcha. Okay, since there are no questions from my colleagues, for, I'll just say the author of the request. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up to members of the public to address the board on this item. If you are so inclined to address the board, please give us your name, so that we know who we're hearing from, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Euler, Boarder Supervisors. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. My name is Bill Beatty. I'm the homeowner in Martis Camp, president of the Homeowners Association. I have Scott Bauer, who is the general manager of the association, and Richard Berman, who's the treasurer of the association, here today, too. We simply wanted to be with you today to communicate our support for this initiative, and to mention how important this is to us. You know, if you could, if you could do one of those Google shots of Martis Camp, you would see clearly the perimeter, you would see the internal open spaces, the residential corridors, and the reality is, it's all clean. Because from the start, this has been a huge priority for us. We've spent a lot of, a lot of time and effort and money to make sure that we are as prepared as possible to mitigate. Happy to be a firewise community now, as well. And finally, in, about nine months ago, we began an initiative to create our own residential emergency preparedness program within Martis Camp. Actually had Holly Powers and Michelle Baxter and Paul Long help us from your staff to vet and provide input. But that culminated in this, in this book that we distributed in late May to our organization, which actually did focus on the same things mentioned here today, communication, preparedness, and evacuation. I brought a copy for all the supervisors today, in an obvious attempt to influence your vote eventually, but we'll leave you with these and one for Holly as well. But we're also happy with the insurance company initiative, and Supervisor Gustafson and I did my survey a couple nights ago, so you'll have that input. But the reality is, when all is said and done, we can only mitigate the risk. We can't, we can't remove it. At the end of the day, we also need to make sure that we have appropriate professional resources should that event occur. And Tim's great presentation, he outlined very well the amount of money that we send to Placer County in terms of property taxes, and we were kind of shocked and surprised, I guess, to know that none of that is actually coming back to help us. And we don't require or ask a lot, honestly. We're pretty self-contained. We do our own roads, we do our own snow removal, et cetera, et cetera. But we also think that allocating what probably represents about 0.7% of the property taxes we send your way is a reasonable request, and it's fair and justified. So I actually, here today, just to respectfully ask that you find a way to support this very, very modest budget expenditure, and help to protect us with this very, very important risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you wanted to give those to the quirk of the board, she'll get them out to us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Stevens. I'm a resident of Lahonton in Placer County, and I'm in the donut hole. And in 2011, I worked with Truckee Fire Chief Bennett at the time on a Citizens Advisory Committee on this issue unsuccessfully, and we're here again. And that start on public service got me into being the four-year unpaid project manager for Community House in Kings Beach. And then I went for Airport Board, so I'm still doing it. But the point that I have to make is, I pay, everybody pays their property taxes, in the blue, in the white, et cetera. My property taxes this last year were $25,699, and approximately 2,000 of that, because we're in the donut hole, goes to Truckee Fire. If that was in Martis Camp, one, my house would be worth more, but two, they'd get zero. And I'm just, I urge you to take a step to correct this fairness issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Euler, members of the board. My name is Pat Davison with the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe. With me is one of my members, Craig Weaver with MOBO Law. So I want to thank you for having this discussion. We were part of the Citizens Committee when it was first established back in 2011. It's been eight years. This is still a high priority for our association. This is not about codes, or policies, or fees. This is about good government, fairness, and equity. Who's actually paying the bills for Truckee Fire? I've spoken many times about this issue to a variety of groups, as well as to some of you on the board, and I have some visual aids that I use. So I just wanted to show you a couple of these, because I'm retiring them. The first is a map that showed the tax rate areas, because we had to learn what was this all about, so I pieced together all the individual maps, and that gave us a sense of the geography that was involved. The second was tax rolls from 1973, and this was all of the tax rate areas, and that was a fun job going through, and then comparing to tax rolls after Prop 13. And my favorite visual aid is the handwritten letter from Bertha Wolverton. She was the owner of the grazing land that we now call Martis Camp, Shaffer's Mill, and Lahonton. Very precise, orderly handwritten letter, asking Truckee Fire to annex her grazing land into the district, and perhaps a lower rate might be applied to our unpopulated and undeveloped land until such time as development takes place. So fully expecting that there would be development and higher taxes. Today, my visual aid is a little bit different, because we're moving into a different phase of this issue. This is the celebration phase, and I'm going to give this to Truckee Fire when we have a done deal. Thank you very much.
You give it to the board, you might get your deal.
I didn't bring any booze, I'm sorry. Jeez. Good afternoon, supervisors. Welcome Supervisor Gustafson. Haven't seen you up here yet, so thank you. My name is David Pollavee. I'm an elected member of the Truckee Town Council. I'm also a former Placer County resident, business owner, and former member of the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Committee. And through all of these experiences, I'm very familiar with the interconnectedness of our region. Today, I'd like to present you with the Town of Truckee's comments regarding the District Fire Fee Fund Sharing Request. Our council voted unanimously to support this letter, which I'll now read to you. "To the Placer County Board of Supervisors, regarding the Truckee Fire Protection District Fire Fee Fund Sharing Request. This letter expresses the Town of Truckee's support for the agreement between the Truckee Fire Protection District and Placer County regarding distribution of funding to support fire protection and emergency response services to the Martis Valley. The town's concerns regarding this agreement are based on support for our citizens' emergency service levels. It is our understanding that the Truckee Fire Protection District has been and will continue to be the first responders for emergencies and fires within the Martis Valley area. The remainder of the taxpayers within the district boundaries, including the entire Town of Truckee, are paying their fair share for these services without benefit of funding from the Martis Valley area. This situation will stretch the resources of the Truckee Fire Protection District, reducing service availability within the remainder of the district's boundaries. The Martis Valley property owners pay their full 1% Ad Valorem property tax to Placer County. On behalf of the Truckee taxpayers, we request that the Placer County Board of Supervisors approve the agreement brokered between Placer County staff and the Truckee Fire Protection District. Sincerely from our mayor, David Tierman." In closing, I'd just simply like to leave you with the reality that our region has been working together in a very effective manner through issues like locals' housing, groundwater management, trail connections, and so many others. We'd like to continue this positive relationship and enhance the fire protection for residents of our entire region, and this is just one way to help achieve that goal. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you. All right, after this gentleman, is there anybody else that's going to want to address the board?
Always last. Rob Leptwich, I'm the chief of police for the Truckee Police Department, and I think my first concern is that a fire protection district continues to use donut hole in the description of this. There's a cop joke in here, and some cultural appropriation I'm not comfortable with, but I'm going to let that go. You have a procedural issue in front of you today, and I rather, you've heard enough from our community partners to really understand that, I'd like to talk a little bit about the logistics and our partnership with the Truckee Fire Protection District. We continue to be very collaborative in a variety of ways. And in just two short years, really, the monument event in my mind is the Santa Rosa Fire and the Tubbs Fire. Chief Saleen and I have collaborated consistently for those 24 months, and continue to really, what I'll say, pluck away at all the low-line fruit. What is left are things that are not inexpensive. And this funding goes a long way for us to continue to prepare Truckee and the Fire Protection District, and really, Placer County residents that consider themselves residents of Truckee, to be prepared in a wildfire emergency and evacuation. And I think it's critical that we continue to support their efforts and mine, quite frankly, and our collaboration to make sure that we're ready for the next big catastrophe. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
On a closed ad, Truckee Town Council, hello, Placer County Board of Supervisors. Thank you so much for hearing this today. I really appreciate your time and consideration. Primarily, I think everything's already been spoken, but I'm here to join the chorus of support for this brokered deal. The Truckee, as David Pollavee said, read, we sent a letter of support from the Town Council unanimously approved. And I just want to reiterate that this request for the first responders in this area to be compensated for this service is really a modest request for what I would consider a heroic support. And I would like to provide this support, or continue to provide this support, for the Truckee Fire Protection District. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else want to address the board on this item prior to it coming back to us for our conversation? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to the board this time. Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Mr. Taren and Chief Saleen, and others that have met with me on this issue. I don't think this is a good idea. In March of 1980, some very wise and forward-thinking elected officials and staff members, men and women, passed Resolution 81- and women, passed Resolution 8142, and they made it clear. They foresaw the issues that were going to come forward to the county from Proposition 13 and AB 8, and they made it clear that there would be no negotiations. I understand the issue, I understand the uniqueness of this whole situation. We've talked this through several times before, 2011, 2015. This isn't the first time I've had to deal with this issue. In 2007 and 2008, Loomis Fire Protection District was about ready to close its doors. I worked with them, I got yelled at because we weren't giving them, the county wasn't giving them any money. I put a group of community members together, we were able to work with them to pass a parcel tax. Today, they finally consolidated with South Placer Fire. 2011, 2012, I worked with the Newcastle Fire Protection District, same thing, they're getting ready to fold up. I stood in the Loomis and the Long Valley Community Hall, taking a lot of tough hits, because the county wasn't giving them any money. We've got, again, we got community members together, we passed their parcel tax. In 2015-16, same thing in Penrin. The Penrin Fire District was about ready to throw in the towel. I had a community meeting at the Penrin School, talked the issues through, again, the same issue, people were yelling because the county wasn't doing anything. But again, we got community members to bring forward a parcel tax, and it passed. Now, Forest Hill. Forest Hill has finally been able to pass their parcel tax after three times. Now, if we go ahead and make a deal with the Truckee Fire District on this issue, Supervisor Gustafson and I are going to be at the Forest Hill Forum next month. How are we supposed to tell them? What are we supposed to tell them? That we made a deal with people that can afford to live in Martis Camp, and we're not going to help the people in Forest Hill? I'm not objection to the idea of doing something comprehensively, but if we do this piecemeal, it's not going to look pretty. The special districts are going to be knocking at our door, asking for participation in the parcel tax and this type of issue. If we're going to do something, it needs to be a comprehensive approach throughout the county. That was one of the things that the ad hoc committee was intended to take charge of, and we're not there yet, and we need to keep working on that. So, again, I just want to let you know, I don't think this is a good idea, but I would be willing to have some kind of a comprehensive conversation regarding all the fire districts in the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. Any other board member? Supervisor Gustafson?
This is obviously a point potentially of disagreement between board members, and the first time since I've been on the board. And so I want to be very respectful of my counterparts, who have much longer duration on this Board of Supervisors than I do. The way I've tried to look at this situation is the difference between what Supervisor Holmes discussed and this situation, is there's a difference between not enough money and zero money. And in looking at that, and also looking at this identified fund as being fire fund, and not having people that are paying into the fire fund on this side receiving benefit from that, is a challenge. I think the other challenge for me is, this region depends on each other. Our partnerships with the town, with Nevada County, Eldorado County, school district, hospital district, we often have to band together up here in times that we can't get help from the other side of the hill, from either side of the hill, in certain disasters we've had. And so we really look to each other in our partnership. And what I see, and what I've talked to many of my colleagues in the Truckee area, is that the Truckee residents are paying for this. It's not, they are paying for the services that are benefiting Placer County residents. It's clear in that regard, and so I am supportive of this, understanding that in this situation, I don't find it precedent-setting for the issues we're struggling with on the other side of the hill where there's not enough funding, and yet, we're sending down almost $300,000 a year to the other side of the hill to assist in that, just directly out of the fire fund. So I understand the concern. We are going to have, I am going to take heat, literally, in other areas of my district for saying this, but I do find that all taxpayers want to find equity with their tax dollars. They want to know that their tax dollars are being fairly distributed by this board, and there were issues in the past that we can't fix retroactively, but we can try to address moving forward and set good public policy on it. And that's the way I've approached this. I've tried to look at it all sides, and understanding the issues of the shortfalls in some of our other districts, we have to address those. They do have separate fire districts that, they were receiving Prop 13 funding, or ad valorem tax funding, as well as fire fund. So trying to make sure we do the best we can with the information we have today. So I'm supportive of this request.
Okay, any other comments from other supervisors? Supervisor Gore, did you have something to add?
Yes.
You've got to push your, my lights are actually working now, Robert. Bonnie went ahead, though, and so, since she's better looking than you are, I'm going to let her go.
Oh, boys. So I appreciate Supervisor Holmes, your position and the work that's been done with the ad hoc committee, and I know that there are some equities with our general fund, our fire tax, et cetera, and we really do have to look at having our communities pay their fair share, absolutely. But when you say that on that end, we look at this community, and this community is paying into a fire fund that's not being utilized in their own community. And I've read through the comments of the action that the board in the past had taken about, we're not going to make any changes, and the board passed a resolution. But there are times when you have to move forward and think, is that the right action to be taken in this situation? And I look at the letter from 1997 from the auditor controller, I look at the 2003 MVCP, the FEIR, and it looked like there was money available. And Supervisor Euler asked that question, what happened? And it's not clear what happened, but it was evident there was an intent, the dollars were there. So now we fast-forward, and when I think about fairness, I think about, we need to do what's right, and as a board, we have to make decisions about what's right, not just about, well, this is what's always been done, or, you know, staff did a good job of saying, well, this is what the law is. Always, it's not always about what the law is, it's really about the intent and what's really the right thing to do for a community, and I think that that's important for us to consider. So in this situation, I feel like it's important for us to make sure that the fire funds that are collected in this community provide the benefit for this community, especially when you're looking at other communities such as Truckee. They're funding the fire protection for our community, and that's not appropriate.
Supervisor Wagon?
I'm going to start by saying, I concur that I think, actually, all of my colleagues are better looking than me, so that results in me talking last time. But I have a procedural question first, excuse me, and that is, this is an update and seek direction notice, so I'm assuming we do not need necessarily a motion, but that you guys can sort of count our comments and come back with respective directions. Is that what you're thinking?
That's correct. Yep.
So, I'll also be really, I'll be perfectly political and say that all of my colleagues' comments are well-taken and have good points. And so my direction would be that, Jim, you know, I've sat through a multitude of conversations specifically on this issue over the years with staff and other people, and I've sat through a lot of conversations with other fire districts over the years, and I've been on the board since the county took in its responsibility, Dry Creek Fire and Consolidated Fire. So my direction is, I think, from what I understand, that there is enough of an anomaly here, that we could, in fact, take the standards that are reflective, from what I understand, and apply them universally. And so I'm certainly willing to have staff come back with that purview, and then some recommendations. And I think, in light of all of the circumstances up here, there could be some positive outcomes if, in fact, we were to consider some kind of financial partnering. We all know that Prop 13 has some anomalies for a lack of more detailed descriptions, but one of them affects my district dramatically, and we heard about it not long ago, and that is that the tax share area in a lot of Lincoln is unusually low as compared to other areas throughout the county, and so that's also causing some tension. And there are times, I think, where we just need to revisit these kinds of things, and I'll look a little bit more closely at the details. So those are my comments and my direction.
All right. Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Wagon, are you looking at something more comprehensive or universal? You mentioned universal throughout the county. Is that your?
Well, I think what I would want is, you know, I've met with the folks that are requesting the specific ask of the day, and I've heard their story in detail, so, and I've talked to staff, including Todd, I would want an affirmation that there's reasonable adequacy to the extent that we can recreate the history. Obviously, my personal opinion is that some people were asleep at the wheel way back when all this went forward, and so then the question is, that may be as it is, but how far do we carry that? And we want affirmation of that, a recommendation, I think, of something that makes sense, reasonable is fair, and if we had similar requests from other districts, we would be able to use this as a basis. So I think the work that you've done particularly as it relates to Consolidated Forest Hill, but we took a hard position with those folks, but we did help them help themselves. We participated hugely financially with getting them to where they've landed, and so I think if we can be a little bit creative and thoughtful, we can come forward with a good recommendation.
Yeah, the fire service since the mid-1940s and on, it's changed so dramatically, and the laws have been placed in Proposition 13, Proposition 218 have tied the hands of fire district boards, and they, you know, they're reluctant to go out for parcel taxes, and it really takes a challenge. Forest Hill just did it, but it took three times. So we just need to have a comprehensive look at how fire service is done with the special districts and come up with some kind of a universal plan, so I would agree with you.
All right, well, since we're simply providing direction and not doing it in the form of a motion, but rather with our comments, clearly, this is unique. This is the only area that we can point to in the county where none of the local shares actually received by the district providing the service. And we have an opportunity to rectify that, something that, obviously, somebody actively reached out 22 years ago to say, now, we're going to actually get this, right? And at that time, Kim Buck Williams, our auditor controller, said, yes, this is money that should go to you. And, you know, it's a pretty simple system. Our assessor says, here's how much you have to pay, and the treasurer tax collector then collects it and remits it to the special districts, and the auditor controller says, yes, it's going to the right place, or no, it's not going to the right place. And somewhere in that process, something got missed. And even though somebody affirmatively reached out to the county to say, now, we're going to get this, right? And the county said, oh, yeah, good to go. It's not happening. So we have a chance to fix that. And frankly, I think that the request that is being made of this board in terms of the overall percentage of what's being generated in the area versus what they're asking to come back, I think this is a really good deal for us. I think we ought to take this deal. And, you know, I say this, as we know, we have other areas in this district, in this fire protection district, in Placer County, that are not as, shall we say, affluent as this area, who are subsidizing the service delivery in this area. And that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I think, just as a general fairness, both to the residents of Truckee and the other folks in unincorporated Nevada County, as well as our own residents that are served by this district, just as an issue of fairness, we have to take a step to rectify this. So while I am certainly willing to have other conversations about the needs of other districts, I want to see our board conclude this particular action first, and then I'm more than happy to hear the needs of the other districts. Any other questions or comments by board members? Seeing none to staff have adequate direction? You want to clarify something?
I just want to clarify the question. One of the things we would appreciate, and I can work with county council on this, is actually to bring back.
That's in, it's in the item as agendized, that we would provide direction to staff, that they would then return to the board with the updated agreement, as well as the fiscal analysis that would need to be done. Does staff feel they have adequate direction in order to accomplish that? Staff does, so, okay. All right, so at this time, we are done with the items that were agendized for today, other than, we have the opportunity, yes, we have the opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting at 5:30, two different locations, Kings Beach Roundabouts, State Route 28 and Coon Street, and State Route 28 and Bear Street. And then after that, we will be hosted at a reception by Plumas Bank at 8475 North Lake Boulevard in Kings Beach. And after that, we'll be back here tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. Thank you all very much.